Good morning. I'd like to call the Board of County Commissioners meeting together to order here in Hillsborough County. Good to see everyone this morning. It's Commissioner White on the call.
Yes, sir, I'm here.
Okay, Commissioner White, we will do all stand for the indication and Pledge of Allegiance given by Chaplin Commissioner Stacy White.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation,
indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff and stakeholders as we make important decisions this morning. I pray that you will cause this COVID-19 virus to subside just as quickly as possible, lay a healing and guiding hand on all of those that have been impacted in all sorts of various ways by this virus. As always, Lord, I pray for the members of our armed forces and our first responders. Pray that you will guide them and keep them safe each and every day. I ask for these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
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 Thank you, Commissioner White.
Thank you.
Appreciate that prayer. Roll call, please.
Good morning, Miller.
Here.
Hagan.
Here.
Kemp.
Here.
Merman.
Here.
Overman.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
White.
Here.
Thank you. You have a form?
Thank you. Amazingly, we have no proclamations today, so we're moving to changes to the agenda. Ms. Wise, good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two items for deferrals to the next board meeting. First is item A44, which is a contract for medical pharmaceuticals. And the second one is item A51, which is to receive the property assessed Clean Energy Program update known as PACE, and that is also deferred to August 20th. We have several items for time certain. The first one, 10 o'clock, item D1 is to conduct a public hearing to consider changes to the code of ordinances for the Emergency Policy Group and restoring those powers to the Board of County Commissioners for emergency management authority. Item G2 is to conduct a public hearing to establish uniform rates for various street lighting classifications for the 2020 tax year. At 10:15, Commissioner Kemp's item, F1, to receive a presentation on Tibardas Envision 2030, the first regional transit development plan for Tampa Bay. Item F2 at 10:30 is an item Commissioner Smith's item to direct the county attorney to collaborate with Economic Development Department, the Arts Council of Hillsborough County and other stakeholders to draft an ordinance amending the Hillsborough County ordinance relating to the structure of the Arts Council and to put it under Hillsborough County Government. Item B8 is at 10:45, which is to approve and execute an agreement with Oracle America for modernization of Oracle Fusion Application Cloud SaaS and EPM Cloud SaaS. And this item is related to item B7 and B9. B7 is to approve an interlocal agreement with the Clerk of Circuit Court relating to the ERP system and demonstrating a partnership between the county and the Clerk of Circuit Court. And item B9, also at 10:45, 10:45, is to award a sole source contract to Protiviti for professional services to assist the county internal auditor with identifying and evaluating risks associated with the implementation of the Oracle application. With that, those are the changes to the agenda.
Move the changes, Commissioner White.
I have a motion about Commissioner White. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Overman to approve the changes to the agenda. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. We're now moving to public comment. The board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the board members. However, as requested at the same time when you address the board, that comments are not directed personally against the commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issue. This provides a mutual respect between the board members and the public. The board has set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comment. At the discretion of the chair, the board may again hear public comments at the end of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak during the meeting will be able to do so by completing the online public comment form found at hillsboroughcounty.org/speakup. You'll be required to provide your name and telephone number on the online form. This information is being requested to facilitate the audio conferencing process. The chair will call all speakers by name in the order in which they have completed the online public comment form. Per authorization is on a first come, first served basis. All audio calling numbers will be provided to the participant that have completed the form after it is received by the county. All callers will be muted upon calling and will be unmuted and allowed to each person to speak. Citizens speaking on scheduled agenda items, we heard before citizens speaking on non-scheduled agenda items. When addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly. Our first speaker is Elena, and I think this GK.
Good morning. My name is Elena, and I would like to discuss mandatory mask orders. So I'm asking your commissioners to put the people before your party affiliation. The virus has no party affiliation, yet I'm being constantly reminded by the people about the virus and how both parties are manipulating the virus. So during the EPG meetings, commissioners never, the EPG members, never brought medical professionals who spoke about the side effects of prolonged use of masks. According to the FDA, masks is considered a medical device. Obviously, every medical device has benefits, but it has to be appropriately used. Masks have to be appropriately used in a sterile environment, but it also has risks when used inappropriately. However, this has never been discussed during the EPG meetings. The doctors never discuss the risk of prolonged use of masks. As a person who does research, and I do a lot of research, in the near future, there will be studies that will explain how prolonged use of masks could chronic medical conditions due to lack of oxygen going to viral organs. The county commissioners will be responsible for any harm that will be caused because the commissioners not following the state, federal, or CDC guidelines on use of masks. CDC guidelines is recommending not mandating wearing masks. Please put people health in front of your party affiliation. Remove mandatory mask orders and let us, the people, be responsible for our own health. Please, 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 I am asking you. This is a political issue, but we talk about people's health. Children who in one year or two years, we will be seeing the effect of constant lack of oxygen. We need to get 100% of oxygen into our vital organs. We will be seeing those side effects eventually. We don't see them yet because it takes time for CO2 to accumulate in our blood, and we will be seeing them. And if we don't do anything right now, we will be responsible in two years and one year and three years for a lot of problems in our children. We will be seeing it and adults as well. I am asking you, please consider people's health before your party affiliation and any other political issues. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Raleigh Sealy, Raleigh Sealy.
Yes, good morning.
Morning.
Um, yes. I am respectfully requesting that you guys not mandate or continue to mandate the masks as there's so many issues that have not been researched enough, including but not limited to the dangers of wearing masks. There've been a couple of studies done in New Zealand, in New Zealand that stated that cloth masks actually do more damage. The said trial raised caution against the use of cloth masks, saying they may result in an increase of infection. So the increase in infection in those people increased significantly higher in a group of mask groups compared to medical mask groups. And were almost 97% higher than medical masks, which were 44%. Masks are meant to be worn in a sterile environment. Outside is not sterile. People aren't considering the heat and the humidity of Florida, which in these cloth masks that most people are wearing will trap bacteria, and bacteria will continue to grow. My grandmother was one of the people wearing a mask. She had MDS and was listening to the news. She contracted pneumonia as a result of wearing a mask. There are so many ill side effects of masks that people aren't talking about. People aren't talking about how OSHA says that cloth masks are not PPE and are not considered personal protective equipment. And they will not protect the wearer against airborne transmission infections agents due to leak fitting, lack of CO, and inadequate filtration. So I'm respectfully requesting that this board not vote on any more mask mandates as we do not know the long-term effect that this will have, including the bacteria growth. And I'm seeing masks thrown on the floor, gloves thrown on the floor. And if they were so infected, why aren't we seeing proper trash cans to dispense these biohazards? That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last speaker we had for general public comment this morning. Am I correct, Mr. Brewer?
Chairman Miller, Gerald White is for item D1, but I'm not certain if that is a public hearing. Is that for?
That's a public, that's a public, that's a public hearing.
Understood, sir. So that concludes general comment.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion to approve the, to approve the agenda. Motion by Commissioner Merman.
Second, Commissioner White.
Second, Commissioner White to approve the consent agenda, seeing, uh, hold on. Seeing no discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise, we have a lot of time before our first public hearing, so where do we go from here?
Yes, sir, we do. So let's go to item B1 on the regular agenda, please. Conservation Environmental Lands Management, and I believe Forest is on to present this item.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Forest Turboville Conservation Environmental Lands Management. Uh, the item before you today consists of two requests. The first is to approve by a supermajority vote a contract with Robert Billingsley and Kenneth Charles Billingsley to acquire approximately 4.43 acres for 614,000. And this site is located within the Rocky Brushy Creek site as part of the J and K Platt ELAP program. And also to authorize staff to complete the transaction in accordance with the contract. Pursuant to ELAP ordinance 08-16, the board also designates the portions of these properties located west of the Upper Tampa Bay Trail as an acquisition of convenience so that these areas will not be restricted under the ELAP ordinance. And as detailed in the background, staff will provide recommendations to the board regarding their future use. The purchase price is the highest appraised value of the two appraisals prepared for the county. Existing bond funds will fund capital acquisition costs of 639,000 and capital management costs not to exceed 30,000. So the second part of the action is to approve a budget amendment to realign 30,000 within the ELAP bond 2019 fund, and that's it.
Uh, let me ask you a question before we get, excuse me, hold on. Let me ask you a question before we go any further on this. The A part, we have to have a supermajority vote, and the B part is a regular majority vote, right? All right, Mr. Brewer?
Correct, yes, sir.
All right, so we're not taking up A. Motion by Commissioner Kemp. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by who?
Merman.
Merman.
Commissioner Merman. Commissioner Kemp, I see your hand up.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Um, I just want to say I'm really pleased to have this. This is the second kind of purchase that has come from the, near the Upper Tampa Bay Trail that came to us prior. And I'm just very excited. This is, uh, the Upper Tampa Bay Trail is our number one park amenity in Hillsborough County. 300,000 people a year use it. This is really important. I'm glad to see that staff has moved on this and that we're looking at this. It was once looked at as an ELAP purchase, as I understand, and I am looking forward to us making this purchase and hope everyone will support it.
Okay, I see no further discussion. This first one, A, has to have a supermajority vote. Please call the roll on B1A.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, now we're at B1B. Is there a motion?
Move approval, Commissioner Merman.
Second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Kemp, you recognize?
Oh, sorry, hand still up.
Okay. Uh, seeing no discussion on this item, we have a motion about Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Kemp to approve item B1B. Please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Miller. The next item is item B2 regarding development services and the distribution of impact fee school dollars. Adam Gormley is here to present that item.
Good morning, Mr. Gormley. You recognize?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Good morning, board members. Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. Item B2 is a request to disburse $11,981,311 of school impact fees to the School District of Hillsborough County. The purpose of the distribution will be to construct 500 middle school seats at Sumner High School, formerly referred to as High School TTT. Uh, these seats are to be provided for an interim period of time at approximately three years, the conclusion of which they will be converted to high school seats. And for that reason, the school district has requested the dispersment of funds sufficient to construct the 500 student stations as high school seats. Uh, there are adequate funds in the school impact fee account to cover this request. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gormley. What's your pleasure?
The item, Commissioner White.
I have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Merman to approve item B2. Seeing no discussion, please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise.
Thank you.
The next items, um, items B3 and B4, Yasha Petrovic is here to present those items for you.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Yasha Petrovic, Economic Development Department. Uh, on January 24, 2020, Colonnade Crosstown LLC submitted an application requesting that Hillsborough County designate the parcels which are located at 2625 South 90th Street, 2124 South 86th Street, 9333 Suarez Road, and 2633 South 90th Street in Tampa, as a brownfield area. The property consists of approximately 158 acres and is shown on a projected map. I hope I'm sharing. Um, Florida statutes require public announcement of the community meeting and two public hearings to designate the brownfield. The prop, uh, the proposed community meeting is scheduled for August 19, 2019 at 6:00 PM to be held by means of communication media technology as allowed by Governor's Executive Order 2069 as extended by Executive Order 2179. The two proposed public hearings are set to be on September 2, 2019, and September 16, 2019, at 10:00 AM during the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. The public hearings will be held by means of communication media technology if the community, if the county commission boardroom in the county center is still close to the public in response to COVID-19 pandemic or in the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Boardroom, second floor of the Frederick B. Carl County Center, 601 East Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, if the county commission boardroom is open. Staff recommendation is to authorize setting a community meeting and two public hearings as proposed. Staff is also requesting a waiver of statutory requirement that one of the public hearings be held after 5:00 PM. The advertised community meeting will be held at 6:00 PM, and the DOC will be provided with full transcript of the public comment at the community meeting. At this time, I'd be happy to take any, answer any questions you may have.
I see no questions. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Speaker. I have a question.
Pardon me?
I have a question, Commissioner Smith.
Uh, Commissioner Smith, your hands must not be working, but go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Um, just for clarification, although it doesn't mention this in here, this is for the Coca-Cola bottling processing plant. What, what is the business that's going to be here?
It, it is the, I believe it is that, it is that business that's going to be there, and they're creating 182 new jobs. We're also retaining their existing operations, and they will be spending $260 million on the new facility that they're going to build there.
Mm-hmm. Is there any reason it doesn't, it says, it doesn't say Coca-Cola anywhere in here?
Uh, because the owner of the, of the project applies for the, for the designation.
All right, thank you.
Because any further discussion? What's your pleasure?
I move approval, Commissioner Merman.
Second by Commissioner Merman, motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve item B3. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
I talked to the water, uh, something like that.
Oh, yeah. Excuse me, someone, uh, hold on, hold on, hold on. If you're not speaking, please mute your microphones. Please mute your microphones. Go ahead, sir. Call the roll.
All right, Miller.
I'll catch you later. I gotta go here. Start over again, sir.
Yes, sir. Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
B4. Did he explain B4 also?
Um, I'm gonna move approval for B3B.
B3B?
Yeah, there's an A, B, and C, and C needs a supermajority.
Uh, C, C needs a majority vote, Miss Commissioner Merman, under B3, it's a majority vote.
B3C.
C, as a majority vote plus one, right? I don't know.
Point of order, point of order, Mr. Chairman. B, and B3 in its entirety passed unanimously anyway.
Right, it passed unanimously, so that's, that's taken care of. So now we're on B4. Uh, did he explain B4?
Item B4, Yasha.
Okay, you recognize his claim B4.
B4, on, on April 14, 2020, American Roman numeral 17 LLC submitted an application requesting that Hillsborough County designate the parcel which is located at 5003 Dover Street in Tampa, in the Brownfield area. The property consists of approximately 11.47 acres, and it's shown on the projected map. Florida statutes require public announcement of the community meeting and two public hearings to designate a brownfield. This proposed community meeting is scheduled for August 20, 2019 at 6:00 PM to be held by means of communication media technology allowed, allowed by Governor's Executive Order 2069 as extended by Executive Order 2179. The proposed public hearings are set to be on September 2, 2019, I'm sorry, 2020, and September 16, 2020, at 10:00 AM during the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. The public hearings will be held by means of communication media technology in the county commission boardroom in the county center. If the county center is still close to the public in response, in response to COVID-19 pandemic or in Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners Boardroom, second floor of the Frederick B. Carl County Center, 601 East Kennedy Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, if the county commission boardroom is open. Staff recommendation is to authorize setting a community meeting and two public hearings as proposed. Staff is also requesting a waiver of statutory requirement that one of the public hearings be held after 5:00 PM. The advertised community meeting will be held at 6:00 PM and will be provided with, and County DOC will be provided with full transcript of public comment at the community meeting. At this time, we have to take any questions you may have.
I see no questions. What's your pleasure?
Move approval, second, Merman.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman to approve item B4. Please call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Kemp.
Yes.
Merman.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
And that also takes into account of C by majority vote plus one because it did pass unanimously. Uh, Ms. Wise.
Sir, the next item is item B5. It relates to the CARES funding. As you may recall, Commissioners, when this item was presented to you on May 6, and you determined certain ranges for the CARES funding, we said we would come back to you if there was a need to change those ranges or make modifications in any way. Um, so I believe either Tom Fessler or Kevin Bricky will be here to present that item.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioners. Uh, Tom Fessler, uh, Tom Fessler, Assistant County Administrator, our chief funding to minister, uh, commissioner. Uh, Commissioners, this item is asking you to approve, uh, the CARES Act funding updated programs and funding ranges as, as we presented them today. As, as Ms. Wise mentioned, uh, back on May 6, you did approve, um, certain, uh, programs and categories for funding. Those included workforce training, $30 to $60 million, accelerated business recovery, $50 to $85 million, back-to-work grants of $15 to $35 million, Safe at Work mitigation grant, $15 to $35 million, and then a life safety category of $35 to $60 million. Um, based on, uh, activities that have been going on and results that we've been seeing and things that we've been identifying, we're coming back to you today to ask you to, to make some revisions to those programs. And we're also asking you to set maximums instead of ranges for, for the new proposed programs. Uh, the new proposed programs will be, continue to be workforce training, uh, with a maximum of $30 million. The business recovery programs, uh, consolidating those for a maximum of $100 million. And then the life safety area, that's where we have found some additional needs. Um, and we're asking you to expand that and to allow us to have a maximum there of $145 million and then a contingency of $10 million. Um, we're not asking you for any type of budget amendment today. The funds are already budgeted. So this is simply, um, asking you to allow us to, um, kind of reallocate and shift, uh, our activities between programs. Um, and with that, I'm available for any questions, or I can explain any of the, the categories in, in more detail if you would like.
Move approval, second.
As a motion by, as a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I am incredibly appreciative of this item and heightening the awareness of the dire needs of our community. Um, we, we've seen with the potential cutback with unemployment benefits. We've seen with the inability of people to return to work. We see the challenges of families looking to care for their kids and take care of their families. For our citizens and having, uh, a strong program in the area of life safety, I think, is, is called for. Um, our staff has worked incredibly hard to make sure that we're responsive to our citizens' needs. And when this was created months ago with the depth and scope of what our residents needed, we couldn't have imagined about where we would, where we are. Uh, we've learned a lot in the process and I know this has to be a living document and I, I appreciate the changes that are being brought forward. It's abundantly clear how our community is suffering and the increase in the level of funding in the life safety programs, specifically, um, the housing and utility area, which I've worked strongly with staff. They're working their butts off trying to get this done. Um, specific, uh, programs available for community services nonprofits, as well as our childcare programs is critically important to us, our success. And the resources that we're providing in terms of food and food distribution, um, is, is impressive and the need is great. So I, I truly appreciate the board's consideration of making these changes and glad to support moving it approve, moving it forward for approval.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioner Murman, you recognize?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Overman made, uh, a lot of the great comments. Um, and I just want to say that we are a lifeline to our citizens. And this is gonna be one way we can really help them in so many ways. There's people now struggling with mortgage payments. Um, you know, the deadlines, the federal government is, uh, really through a curve ball by not authorizing the six hundred, uh, extra dollars, um, for payments to people to help them with their, uh, their needs and their weekly needs. But, uh, the life safety is important, but, uh, more important too is, uh, the assistance we can give our nonprofits. Um, we, uh, the county has invested so much over the years in many of our nonprofits and we can't afford to let that investment get washed away. So, um, I'm looking forward to seeing, uh, that assistance also because it all works together. We just have an incredible number of citizens. If you look at the numbers from, uh, Audrey Ziegler coming out of, uh, social services, the incredible numbers of people that are applying for assistance and the average, uh, number of almost five thousand dollars, uh, that people are applying for. So you know the need is great. Uh, people need housing. They need a roof over their head. They need food. And this is one way we're able to really give them that lifeline to go forward. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Murman. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
I'm sorry, I forgot to take my hand out. My apologies.
Okay, let me also thank staff. Uh, if you all, you all, I talked to them, you have no idea the hard work that our staff has gone through to, to meet the needs of, of the citizens of this county with the dollars we have. Uh, uh, they're working hard each and every day, uh, to take care of those, uh, citizens who have been affected by this pandemic. Uh, yes, we've been thrown some curve ball by other governmental agencies, but I think our staff, I don't think, I know our staff has gone above and beyond, uh, any duty that they, we asked them to do in their, their thought process and their creativeness is, is beyond reproach. So I just want to thank them also. We have a motion back from Mr. Murman, second by Commissioner Overman, seeing no further discussion, please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Murman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Ms. Wise?
The next item is item B six relating to the solid waste, um, resource recovery bonds. Kevin Brickie will present that item.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. Kevin Brickie, Management and Budget. Uh, item B six is asking you to approve the repayment of the county's solid waste and resource recovery bond, series two thousand thirteen with Sunbank, and authorize all necessary steps to facilitate the repayment, including, uh, approving the associated FY twenty budget amendment to do so. Uh, this action will allow the county to save more than two county to save more than two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in interest expense through FY twenty-three, and it also will assist, uh, staff in strengthening the system's financial position as it develops its long-term financing strategy for completing projects in its community, in its, uh, uh, capital improvement program. Thank you.
Move approval, Commissioner Smith. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Murman to approve item B six. Seeing no discussion, please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Murman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Ms. Wise, the only thing we have left, I see on the, on the regular agenda is G one. Uh, and we're still about, uh, thirty-some odd minutes, about twenty-some odd minutes out for a public hearing. Um, how long would G one take, you know?
Um, it probably will take about fifteen minutes or so.
Okay.
G one.
Okay, let's go ahead. Yeah, let's do that.
So let's go ahead with G one, and I apologize, there's some sounds outside my office. I don't know if you can hear them. Um, item G one, and this is a, uh, follow-up actually to the B five item. Um, we present to you at each board meeting a, a summary of what's happening regarding the whole COVID efforts. And this report is evolving over time and we've tried to be more and more informative as we go along. And Tom Fessler is going to present this item, give you an overview. But as you commissioners have already stated, this effort has been, um, every department has participated. And I just really want to publicly thank all of the staff who have participated in this and delivered services, whether it's in emergency management or in social services or in economic development or in, um, the I I O office, communications, everybody has worked together to help this become successful. And so we appreciate that you acknowledge those efforts. So with that, I will turn it over to Tom Fessler. He's going to present this item. And then also Audrey Ziegler is going to, um, participate in this as well. Where we're gonna focus and, and concentrate a little bit on the second phase of the R three program for individuals. Thank you. Tom?
Morning commissioners. Uh, James, I was wondering if you could help me with, um, presenting that or showing on the screen or sharing on the screen the, the item itself. I'm having a little bit of difficulty on my end with that.
Yes, sir. Is that the video or is there a PowerPoint presentation?
No, it's not the video. It would be the, uh, actual item itself in the backup.
I have not received that presentation. Can you send it to me soon?
It would be the PowerPoint that's in the backup.
Correct. I apologize, I'm having a little difficulty on my end with that this morning. Commissioners, I can, I can run, I can run through the item, um, and, and, and speak through, and speak through it, and speak. With the economic recovery programs, um, we started those programs, uh, back in June. Um, and we have now expanded through, uh, phase three of those programs. And it is, they're, they're, um, now open to not only target areas, but they are now open on, on a countywide basis. Um, as far as some of the results to date, as of this morning, during the backup materials that you have, um, those were as of July twenty-third. But I wanted to point out that, um, as of yesterday, we, through the economic recovery programs, we had, had over three thousand applications that have been received requesting, uh, funding of twenty, over twenty-eight million dollars. Um, the average payment that is being made is about eighty-three hundred dollars. And the average time to make a payment or the average time to pay for the completed applications is about thirteen days. In addition to that, um, the distribution of those is, uh, forty-six percent are within city limits for the applications and fifty-four percent are within the unincorporated area. Oh, thank you, James. That's very helpful. Um, it would be a few slides back, it says rapid response recovery results there. And then, and as you can see, commissioners, um, the distribution between the city of Tampa, Plant City, and Temple Terrace, um, and then the unincorporated areas. And then we've also got, have the applications broken down by district. The next slide, you can see we have our, um, economic recovery programs with workforce training. Uh, we are hopeful to get some additional information back from that program, uh, very shortly. But you can see that we have, uh, job seeker applications of almost four hundred, employer applications of thirteen, and then, uh, skills training programs, we've, have approved skills training programs of a hundred and fifteen. Next slide. Next slide, we have our life safety programs. Um, it just kind of shows our plan, um, out through the end of December. You can see that we had an initial application period for the housing and utility vendors, or I'm sorry, housing and utility payments, um, of about a month or so. Um, after the initial phase of that program, we determined that it would be best to kind of, uh, go for a phase two, but do that through using the, um, contract that we had entered into with Ernst &amp; Young based on the volume of activity that we were receiving and we thought it would be more efficient. Um, it did slow things down for a short period of time. Um, but having said that, we launched on Monday. Um, and we have some pretty impressive results on that to date. Um, I will go over those in, in just a few minutes. Um, and with this program also, you can see we have the food, the, the food programs. And then also we have, um, entered into some contracts with, a couple of contracts with Tampa Sports Authority, uh, for Raymond James Stadium improvements and for our sports plaques. As far as our, on the next slide, life safety programs. You can see that we have, uh, to date, the housing utility assistance. Um, so over sixteen hundred, uh, residents under the first phase received, uh, payments, close to three million dollars, average assistance of about eighteen hundred dollars. And then again, we have our food supply program, over one point eight million meals served to two hundred and sixty-three thousand residents. And then again, we have our, uh, community venues that we're working on. We are, we're close to having, um, you know, we've, we've, we have the, the agreement in place, E S A, for Raymond James, and we're also looking at certain other community venues, um, for funding. Um, and we should have that very shortly. As far as the, the phase two on the housing and utility assistance, in the first two days of the program, we have received one thousand six hundred and ninety-two applications with eight point nine five million dollars requested. And yesterday, the call center took four hundred calls with an average of five to six minutes per call. Um, as it was mentioned just a few minutes ago, the average request for assistance is about fifty-three hundred dollars under the second phase of the program. So we are expecting an, an expanded version of the housing and utility assistance program this time around. Probably, um, we're, we're targeting something in, in excess of the. Um, as far as the nonprofit programs, we're in the final development stages, stages of those. Um, we have what we're trying to call, James on the next slide. On the nonprofit programs, uh, we're, we have what we're calling a safety net program that we're trying to roll out. And in addition to that, uh, we would expect to maybe have that initial stages of that program be for, um, nonprofits that we're currently doing business with or that the municipalities are doing business with. And then potentially we're rolling out a phase two of the safety net programs at a later date. Um, as I said, we're in the final stages of, of coming up with program application, uh, guidelines and we expect to roll that out shortly. Next slide. In addition to that, as part of that pro, the nonprofit programs also, we have a, a program that is specific to childcare facilities, uh, to provide them with support, um, and for improvements that they've made, um, or for certain other activities and safe, and safeguarding, uh, providing safety for the children. So again, that is in the final stages of development and we should be rolling that out shortly. On the next slide, you can see that we have our step-down facility, the Annett University Villages. Uh, we have seventy-five individuals in there right now, or as of seven twenty-three. Uh, we also have a program for, uh, housing homeless individuals to provide for social distancing. We have a hundred and fifty-two individuals that are currently occupying those facilities. And then we have our quarantine and isolation site where we have currently a, a census of around forty-two individuals, at least on, on as of July twenty-third. The next slide, on the next slide, you can see there are kind of the results from testing. As of seven twenty-seven, we have, uh, tested over seventy-five thousand individuals. You can see the cases, hospitalizations, and deaths within Hillsborough County. And then you can also see the P P E that we've distributed. The next slide, uh, Commissioner Overman, this was, this is the information that you had requested, um, at the last board meeting. You wanted to see kind of where we were on the CARES Act funding. This is as, I need to point out that this is as of July twentieth. So we went to have gone, been going through several months of developing program, programs and we're now at the, at the very, at the beginning stages of rolling these programs out. So while the dollars here don't seem to be, are not very significant in relation to the total, um, you can see down at the bottom, we have.
Hold on a minute. Mr. Fessler, hold on a minute. Mr. Brewer, are we having some kind of technical difficulty?
No, you're breaking up too.
Yeah, Mr. Brewer?
Yes, sir. Um, not to my knowledge, not to my knowledge, our broadcast is, is coming through clear.
I can understand what you're saying.
No, sir.
You there?
Yes, sir, I'm here. We are not experiencing any technical difficulties on our end. The broadcast is coming through clean and clear, audio and video.
The audience is breaking up.
Yeah, everybody's, everyone's breaking up for some reason.
Yeah, everyone sounds like they're breaking up. I would agree.
I don't know what it is. It's, uh, something's going on, but go ahead, Mr..
The, uh, not working on the V P N and not seeing, hearing the interruption, it may be through.
You're bringing up too, Commissioner Overman.
Okay, I can hear everybody clearly. Um, it's clearly.
Let's, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Uh, it sounds like there's something wrong with the system. Uh, so, Mr. Fessler, go ahead and proceed again. Let's see if we can continue to hear what you're saying, but it is breaking up.
Sure, so. Commissioners, um, this slide is basically is a, is a review of the CARES Act funding. The county has received two hundred and fifty-six million dollars in CARES Act funding. Uh, through, uh, seven twenty, we had expended just over three million dollars. However, we are at the very beginning stages of rolling out, uh, our very significant programs. We have, uh, some agreements that we had now have in place that will result in some.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. It's getting worse.
James, for the record, it's Commissioner White. I can see and hear everything crystal clear.
Uh, Commissioner White, I think you're speaking, but you're breaking up also. Now I know I'm breaking up probably also.
Yeah.
No, Commissioner Smith, I hear everything crystal clear. I see everything. It must be the county system.
She's breaking up too. Everybody's breaking up.
Commissioner Kemp.
Everyone's breaking up.
I'm not getting clear reception at all. I'm, I'm not hearing and, uh, I can see everything, but I can't hear very well at all.
We don't know what you're saying either, Commissioner Kemp.
I can hear everyone, however, those of you that may be working through the county V P N are seeing signal and interruptions.
Commissioner Overman, Commissioner, we have no idea what you're saying. Mr. Brewer, should we all sign out and come back?
Um, that would be your discretion, Chair. We could take a brief pause.
Sorry, sir, say that again.
Yes, if we could take a five-minute recess.
Let's stand in recess. Everybody, everybody, hold on. Let's stand in recess for five minutes. Everybody sign out. Let's sign back on and see if that works out. We're, it's, uh, nine forty-eight now. Let's come back at, at, uh, at nine, uh, at nine fifty-five and see if that works out, okay? Let's just sign out and come back. Let's just sign out and come back.
Commissioners.
We're going to call out Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners meeting back to order. Please call the row for a quorum.
Miller?
Yes, here.
Hagan?
Here.
Kemp?
Here.
Merman?
Here.
Oberman?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
White?
Here.
Thank you. You have a quorum?
Okay, Mr. Fessler, continue.
Yes, Commissioners, so again, Commissioner Oberman, this is the information you had requested at the last meeting. It is an overview of the CARES Act funding and where we are through July 20. We've spent about $3.2 million out of the 256. Having said that, expenditures are rapidly picking up. We are getting agreements in place. I anticipate that at your next board meeting, it's our intent to bring back agreements with each of the cities. And you can see on the bottom of this slide also agreements that we currently have been able to get into place. And the value of those is about $44 million. James, on the next slide. In addition to the CARES Act funding, we also have activities that are what we consider to be FEMA reimbursable. So this slide basically is, is indicating to you expenditures that we have through 7/28. Like.
To bring back agreements with each of the cities.
July 28.
Also agreements.
I'm getting some feedback. So through July 28, we have expenditures of about $15 million that we believe are FEMA reimbursable. Again, the county is responsible for 12 and a half percent of this amount. Having said that, the CARES Act does allow us to re, to meet our matching requirements with CARES Act funds. 75% of this amount would come from the federal government and 12, another 12 and a half percent would come from the state of Florida. And then finally, on the, on the final slide that I have, we also are tracking additional funding that we are receiving. These are grants that we have received that are related to COVID. And you can see that that is not an insignificant amount either. So we have another $25 million, a lot of it in the housing area. Some of it was for our seniors, for our Ryan White program, and for emergency management activities. With that, I guess we did have and wanted to go over with you today just a short video that we had, that has been put together regarding our housing and, and utility assistance program, just to give you kind of a flavor of how that information that we're putting out there to citizens so that we can be successful with this program.
Hillsborough County is utilizing CARES Act COVID-19 crisis intervention funding to provide support and financial relief to residents who have had a reduction of wage or are newly unemployed due to the pandemic. The funding aims to prevent residents from experiencing further financial hardship by assisting them with their rental or mortgage payments and past due utility bills. Residents in Hillsborough County, including City of Tampa, Plant City, and Temple Terrace, are eligible to apply. Funding will be on a first come, first served basis and will be given only if program requirements are met. Here are the eligibility requirements for families seeking financial assistance. Residents must reside in Hillsborough County, including City of Tampa, Plant City, and Temple Terrace. Impacted by a reduction in or loss of wages resulting from layoffs or lessening of hours due to the COVID-19 coronavirus between March 2020 and July 2020. Have liquid assets that do not exceed $3,600. Are on a current lease or mortgage plan of past due utility bills. Fall within income qualifications of at or below 120% area median income qualifications as reported on your 2019 tax return for your adjusted gross income for the year. Here are the documents you will need in order to apply for assistance. Scan copy of the, of your valid Florida driver's license or Florida identification card. Copy of your 2019 federal income tax return. Copy of your full lease or latest mortgage statement. Copy of past due utility bill. Copy of your last full paycheck receipt. One form of proof of loss of income related to COVID-19 impacts due to loss of employment. Those include copy of reduced paycheck after March 1st. Furlough or layoff letter from employer detailing when layoff was and reason. Unemployment statement from company. Company issued proof of loss statement. Online applications will be available on Monday, August 3rd at 10 a.m. For more information, please visit hcflgov.net/r3.
And Commissioners, that, we did, we did not have any more information with this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fessler. I don't see any questions at this time. Hold on. We have some difficulty. Hold on a second. Hold on, hold on. I'm having some problems. Hold on. All right. I see no hands. Okay, I do see the hands. Commissioner Oberman, you're recognized.
Unfortunately, sometimes you just gotta act like a crazy person on the screen. Thank you very much for, for Chair for recognizing me. I appreciate it. And thank you the, to the entire staff among everyone that has worked so hard to roll these programs out. You know, at the state level, we still have some interruptions when it comes to unemployment and other benefits. And recently, we had a change in the rules associated with the evictions. And this is putting families in a serious crisis. The rollout of these programs has been impressive. And the reason I ask the question is because many of these funds have timelines. We have to spend them before the end of the year. So I, I, not all of them, but a lot of them do. And so the urgency in getting our systems in place for being able to take applications is impressive what we've been able to do, but it's taken us some time to get it done. And given that we must prioritize life and safety and we're, we're maximizing the, you know, maximum funding to 145 million. I'm looking forward to the nonprofit safety program and the child facility programs rollout. Thank you very much for doing the video. That will help our citizens. We're sharing it on our social media outlets and making sure that people are aware of it so that they know how to be best prepared. As we know, many of our citizens that have filed for unemployment spend a lot of time on the phone, on the poll, trying to get the right paperwork in order to achieve benefits. So the last thing we want to do is give another long process of application madness to help them access these resources. So I'm really pleased to see that not only are we giving them the list that they need to know what they have to have to apply, but also the criteria so that they can utilize the program. I'm glad that we're working on those improvements. And I'm, I share the sense of urgency that staff has. And I just, I can't say enough, especially given the recent changes in the eviction rules and the backlog of unemployment benefits and the change in federal benefits, how critically important it is that we move these programs forward as quickly as possible. And like I said, I can't thank the staff enough for all the hard work we've done, and I really appreciate it. We are a team and we're doing a great job. Thank you all.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'll be pretty fast, but I know the pain and the suffering and everything we're going through in Hillsborough County and all over Florida and the nation is great. And so I really appreciate, I know the staff has been working at super levels to try to address at least some of these needs with this money. And I do want to say that I thought the video was especially good, fast, and clear. And I think it's a real great tool for helping get the word out there. So thanks, thanks for that, and hopefully we can help to minimize some of the terrible times we're going through now with this virus.
Commissioner Merman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did want to ask, Tom, do, is the money, does it have to be spent by the end of the year? All of it? I, I was under the impression it did.
Yes, Commissioner Merman, the, the initial guidance that we received indicated that it had to be expended and spent and money out the door by December 30th. Subsequent guidance that we've received basically is indicating that you have to have basically commitments in place for goods and services incurred versus out the door. So in other words, it's more of a, you know, in accounting terms, it's more, instead of a cash basis of accounting, it's more like an accrual base of accounting. So as long as you purchase something, even if you, you know, if you've purchased something, but you haven't paid for it yet, then we have, I think it's maybe up to another 90 days after you're in to actually make a payment for what we've received before the end of the.
Very good. And just last comment. I hope that our communications department gets the word out about all this work we're doing, how great our staff has put this plan together, because this is a significant deal for us to lend all this help to citizens in our community. And I just, you know, I hear all the time from people, oh, we don't do enough for our citizens. Well, we're doing a lot. And I hope that they'll put a plan together to really get the word out that assistance is here. Thanks.
Commissioner Merman, put your hand. There you go. Seeing no further discussion on G1, we must receive the report. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kemp to approve, to approve, to receive Adam G1. Seeing no further discussion, please call the row.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Oberman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
That's wise.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This brings us to our 10 o'clock time certain. The first item is item D1, the public hearing relating to emergency management authority.
Good morning, Commissioners. Paul Johnson, the county attorney's office. Before you today is an ordinance that amends county's emergency management ordinance. As you requested at the last meeting, the draft ordinance has been further amended to transfer all authority and power from the emergency policy group to the Board of County Commissioners. Staff recommends adoption of its ordinance as presented. This is a public hearing and individuals may wish to speak on it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. We have three people that have signed up to speak on this issue. The first one is Gerald White. The Brewers, Mr. White on the phone.
Commissioner, this is Global Communications. Gerald White, if you can hear us, you are live. Sir, he is connected, but he is not speaking.
Okay, we'll come back to him. The next speaker is Jason Kimble.
Hey, guys. So I, I think that this proposal is totally complicated by the fact that the EPG decided to renew their very controversial executive order despite all of the facts that have come out regarding cloth masks and the danger that they pose. And despite the fact that, you know, this is under judicial review. We have a hearing scheduled for the 12th. And I have to say, for the first time, we're finally going to get experts who aren't, you know, controlled or carefully selected to push masks on our community. And you, experts are definitely scared to testify. They're scared to even talk to Commissioners. There was an expert that I wanted to, we're trying to get in touch with a commissioner on the board of county commissioners, and he honestly said, look, with this cancer culture thing going on, cancel culture thing going on, and with the risks, the pressure from administration, I don't want to do it. So all of these doctors are feeling threatened. They're feeling that they have to stay silent. But ultimately, especially in this hearing that's coming up, I mean, there's going to be no avoiding the facts. We, the Representative Sabatini and Chris Anall, they haven't even finished cross-examining the county's experts, and that's going to conclude on the 12th as well. And it's, I just don't think it's going to end up being very good for the county if you retain these, this executive order from the EPG, which, as I've said, and I've told the EPG this, I know, I think I mentioned it during. trial that I know of. And I think it was even mentioned by a caller who called in earlier in the public comments, I don't know who she is, but people are finding out about this study, and knowledge is going to spread. And honestly, emergencies are supposed to be not a permanent measure. They're not supposed to, the measures to address emergencies are not supposed to continue on indefinitely. If you guys are going to retain the order and mandate masks for such a long period of time, you have to follow the correct protocols for approving a medical device and getting a medical device approved. And your experts don't have the study, the county attorney doesn't have the studies, nobody has the valid evidence to put forth to mandate these masks for what you're looking to use them for, and mandating face coverings. So, guys, I don't know how to get through to you, but I'd say, please, please do not mandate this until it's further investigated, until you have real, valid evidence that masks are effective, that they're not dangerous. And I'm telling you guys, it's not out there. If it was out there, it would have been provided in front of the EPG all these weeks that the meetings have been conducted to renew the order.
Thank you, Mr. Kimball, your time is up. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Diana Lott.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead. Yes, we can.
Okay. I literally just, okay, can you give me just a second, because I just got back on the call because I was kicked off. Maybe I can go up to the next speaker.
Pardon me?
Maybe I can go up to the next speaker. I just need just a second here.
Okay, just hold on, I'll come back to you. I'll come back to you.
I just got back from the call because I was kicked off.
I'll come back to you, Ms. Lott, hold on. Gerald White?
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. First, I've read the ordinance thoroughly. I have been a part of the community for quite a while, and tried to attend the emergency policy group meetings. I understand the roles of the city of Tampa, the role of Plant City, and the role of Temple Terrace, and the role of the sheriff, and the school board related to emergencies in Hillsborough County. And at first, I was reluctant, but after reading the work of the county administrator and the county attorney and the end document by the sheriff of Hillsborough County, I support the ordinance as written to change the makeup of the emergency policy group. I have absolute unequivocal confidence in the Board of County Commissioners to make the right decision on behalf of all the citizens of Hillsborough County. And so I'm with you. I believe the citizens of this county is with the Board of County Commissioners, and I believe the mayors of the cities will be with you as well. I'd like to thank the sheriff of Hillsborough County, Cronister, for weighing in publicly, submitting his letter of pardon to this document, and I'm confident that we will continue to move forward as a community. So I support this, I'm behind you 100%, and I believe the citizens as well. So we have a very, very talented team in the county, and I'm sure we will continue to manage emergencies in our community. Thank you, Commissioner Miller, for bringing this issue forward, and I'd like to thank the entire board for supporting County Commissioner Chairman Les Miller in this effort to make our community a better, better, stronger place. God bless, enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you. Diana Lott?
Okay, I'm ready now. Thank you, thank you for coming back to me. Good morning, Commissioners. I don't usually participate in public comments, but after listening to your meeting on July 21st, when you voted seven to zero to take away the pandemic decisions from the EPG, I felt compelled to say something. I could agree with the opening statement by Commissioner Miller that it was for legal reasons, that this group has more power with the law than the EPG, although I'm not sure that you will do what you will do with this besides finding citizens in a bad economy. I'm not sure what that does to help anyone. But what disturbed me the most were the comments by everyone following, with the exception of Commissioner Hagan, who said that restructure should more appropriately happen in November. That actually made sense. What I heard from everyone else was pretty much that you could handle things better, that you were more qualified, that you were the ones elected by the people, and so on. You basically insulted the other duly-elected officials on APG who have given up a great deal of their time to help in their situation. Some of you made comments that we are the only county in Florida who has an APG structured the way we do. Well, it has worked tremendously well for four decades. I actually thought we were the smart and innovative ones, and Mayor Ross substantiated that feeling on Monday when he commented that people from other areas are impressed with how our APG is structured and how everyone works together. So much work has been done to bridge the gap between the cities and the county, and for it to get to the point where everyone is working together. This motion is the opposite of what this group has strived to achieve. It's just a shame that all the work will go down the drain. You had key players involved, with the mayor, school board member, and sheriff, but they weren't doing what they, what you wanted, so you used your power to make changes, again, as Mayor Ross said in the fourth quarter. Instead of continuing debate, you just changed the members to get your way. I just haven't heard a reasonable explanation to change something after four decades of success. Here's the truth I can tell you. People choose to live in a certain area for particular reasons. People have chosen to live in the Plant City limits for very good reasons, one of them being that they like how the city is run by the mayor and commissioners. You see, I actually think it's very odd that a city with its own mayor and commissioners and police force are supposed to follow the laws that this body of commissioners decides on. I've learned a lot about politics the last 20 years, and I've learned, and I've learned that's how it's done throughout the state, but it still seems odd to me. People in Plant City look to our mayor and commissioners and police and fire to protect them. So with that said, the main thing I wanted to say today is that the very least you can do moving forward is to delegate authority to Plant City for its own pandemic and hurricane decisions, at least in the city limits. I can't speak for Temple Terrace, but I know the citizens of Plant City would agree with me wholeheartedly. That would be the respectful thing to do. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. That is our last speaker for D1. That closes the public comment section. I'm going to pass the gavel to Commissioner Overman to make one motion, and if that motion passes, I'll make another motion. We all know what this, this issue is about and what we're doing here. And I think you all have received the letter from the sheriff, who was in support of us passing this and bringing all the emergency responsibility back to the county commission. And there have been others also. So I want to make a motion, and if that passes, I'll make another motion after that. My motion is, is that we adopt D1 in its entirety, and then if that passes, I'll come back to another motion. So my motion is to adopt D1.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Miller has made a motion. We have a second by Commissioner Kemp and Commissioner Merman. Any discussion?
Commissioner Smith.
Commissioner, Commissioner White, I see Commissioner White here. Commissioner Smith, you must be having a problem with your hands. Commissioner White, then Commissioner Smith.
Okay.
Thank you. I just want to ask the county attorney's office, as it stands today, before the Board of County Commissioners potentially enacts this ordinance to take the authority for emergency management back, how long is that mask requirement in effect that's, that's been enacted by the EPG?
Commissioner, this is Christine Beck, county attorney, and the EPG's face covering order specifically includes a provision at their direction to review the order every seven days.
Okay. So, so when, when is it set to expire?
So it was just approved on Monday, this past Monday, so it would be in effect until next Monday.
Okay. For, for the record, I, I am opposed to the face mask mandate. I think that it can be effectively handled through private businesses and through citizens' personal actions. I think that a mandate is just too heavy-handed and frankly, just, just ineffective. So I'm not supportive of the, of the face covering mandate. I am going to support this motion today because I do think that getting this into the hands of the county commission is the right thing to do. And Ms. Beck, if I understand you correctly, we'll have to address the face covering issue by next Monday.
That's correct, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions to the motion?
Commissioner Smith.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. I, I had seconded the motion. I don't know that, that you heard me. I've been hoping that we could get here for some time. The, this action is simpler than some people, you know, I think some of the speakers are making it out to be. It's simply moving the emergency authority back to the county commission, where this authority has always rested, prior decades before a commission has delegated that authority to another body in a way that other counties do not do. It worked for us a little, in a way, for emergencies like hurricanes, but I think in this pandemic, it's the right thing to do, as Commissioner White said, to, to bring this authority back to where it really belongs and where people throughout the county are represented by their elected officials in a, in a clearer way, and, and in the way that the government is actually structured, people can more easily communicate with their elected officials about these matters. And I just think it makes a lot of sense. I agree with Sheriff Cronister's viewpoints that he's raised on this, as well as the, the legislator Bertrand, who spoke to us at the, at the last meeting when we were setting this hearing, so Beltran. So for those reasons, I'm very supportive of this and glad to see this happening.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Are there any other hands?
Commissioner Kemp.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'll just be fast, because I know we've had several discussions about this. This is the right thing to do. This is where 66 out of 67 counties in Florida operate this way. This is the way that we did operate for many years and then decided by just agreement, not even by, not, we didn't even do it by ordinance, we just cooperated, which we can certainly always do and share. But we do represent the entire county, every community within it is represented on this board by at least four commissioners. So there is precedence for doing this. It makes the most sense in, in terms of streamlining efficiency. It is the county staff that manages the emergencies within most of the county, and it just makes sense. And I'm, I think it's really important that this is being moved back.
Okay, any other hands raised before I comment and take roll call?
That's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Just since inception of the emergency policy group, our county has grown rapidly with a tremendous expansion in the unincorporated population. More than two-thirds of our, of our, more than two-thirds are, of the 1.5 million are in unincorporated Hillsborough County. It's my firm belief that the BOCC is the best body to achieve the type of proportional representation necessary to ensure the interest of all county residents. We must continue to work collaboratively, collaboratively with our cities, school district, sheriff, all of the constitutional officers. And I have full faith in our staff and our emergency operations center that represents all the stakeholders, all the municipalities, our law enforcement, fire rescue, our great teams, as well as the county staff, will continue to break down the silos to find solutions and coordinate our emergency response. This change, which changes our ordinance, will keep us in lockstep with other counties in the state of Florida. By making these changes, we ensure the funding that comes to the county to be distributed out to the various municipalities in our efforts. And the Florida state statute envisions the Board of County Commission as utilizing these powers to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of the people and the property within Hillsborough County during an emergency. Our, our county administrator establishes the budget as part of the, this group for emergency issues, and allows for individuals to come make presentations. And I'm sure that our municipalities will have an opportunity to communicate with the board as, as stakeholders on their needs should they not be addressed at the emergency operations center. And I will be supporting this motion. Thank you. Please take a roll call vote. Madam Vice Chair, before I take the roll, I just want to verify, the motion was made by Chairman Miller and seconded by Commissioner Kemp?
Kemp and Smith.
Kemp and Smith. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Madam Vice Chair, just hold on to that, that, the chairmanship for a few minutes. I want to ask Ms. Beck, Ms. Beck, this now has to be transmitted to the state, am I correct?
Yes, you're correct, Chair Miller. The ordinance becomes effective upon the filing with the Secretary of State, and it is an electronic transmission, so it should be effective as soon as we receive word back that they have received it. And so that should be today.
That should be today. Okay. I have another motion. The twice-a-week meetings that the EPG had put enormous strains and workload on our county staff and on the health department staff, Dr. Holt and Mr. Wagner. And I don't think we need to have those meetings twice a week now. I think that if we have those meetings once a week on a Thursday, we can get all the pertinent information we need concerning this virus. If there's a need for us to do something, if the numbers continue to, the numbers start to rise, and we have a major, major concern, we can then call a special meeting. But the workload that we're putting on our staff and the health department staff was just enormous. So I'm going to make a motion that we have our first meeting starting tomorrow, which would be August the 6th at 1:30, and we meet every week on Thursdays at 1:30. That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Miller. I have a second by Commissioner Kemp and Smith.
Hagan and Smith.
Hagan and Smith.
You can put Kemp there, too.
Okay. Any discussion? Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Yes, and thank you for, for bringing this together, Commissioner Miller. You know, I, I think when this pandemic was first coming upon us, it was really important that, that we have these forums of, of information on a ongoing basis. But now that we've reached this place, we really don't need to be using that public forum as much to inform ourselves and the public about the, the daily changes in the data, because our, not only the state, but our county is providing a, a wonderful dashboard that is updated in real time, daily, that everyone can go to. Our communications department is doing a really terrific job of keeping everyone in the county informed of the situation as things change, and, and we are all easily easily able to access that data in real time through all those channels. So the, it certainly, considering the, the burden it is on staff to, to put on these meetings and, and have the statistics presented in that forum are just, the need for that is, is not the same when, now that we have that information so easily available. So once a week makes perfect sense, especially considering we can always come together, as Commissioner Miller said, anytime we need to in between those. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. I see no other hands. Are there any other comments before we take a roll call vote? Seeing none, please take a roll. Miller?
Yes. Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Overman, for chairing that.
Commissioner Miller, I have a couple of comments that relate to this, if I may, please.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much. I just want to, and now that this is passed and we got, we have a future meeting tomorrow. I intend, and I would like for the board to be aware of it, so they're not surprised, I intend to bring two items for discussion regarding orders that are incorporated within our existing orders that will be assumed by the B O C C as their emergency action. The first item deals with a possible amendment to Section 9A, which would align our order with the Surgeon General's Public Health Advisory that states that face covering should not be worn by a child under two years old. Our order exempts children below the age of eight. The second item-
Commissioner Overman. Commissioner Overman.
I'm not asking for a motion today.
Can this be brought up tomorrow at our meeting?
It can. The only reason I'm bringing it up is because we have members that may not have been on this committee before that need to have some time to think about these items. And that's the only reason I'm bringing them up. I'm not asking for a motion.
I still think that tomorrow will be the emergency management meeting, and that will be the proper place to bring these forward tomorrow, not today.
Okay. I'll withdraw. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Wise, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is item D two, and Josh Bellotti is here to present this item relating to street lighting assessments.
Good morning, Commissioners. Josh Bellotti, Engineering and Operations Department. This is a public hearing to set the separate uniform rates for the various street lighting classifications and adopt the non-advalorem assessment for residential street lighting for the 2020 tax year. There are no proposed changes from the current street lighting rates, which were approved in 2017, and are estimated to generate approximately $9.87 million in revenue. In accordance with the statutes, written notice of this public hearing was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times and sent via first-class mail to new property owners who receive residential street lighting service. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, and this is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing. We had no one signed up to speak on this matter, so they closed the public hearing. I see no hands. Motion by Commissioner Merman.
Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White and Commissioner Overman. Do I hear her voice, Commissioner Overman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner White, Commissioner Overman. Seeing it further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp? Commissioner Kemp? Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Commissioner Kemp?
The new sir?
The motion carried six to zero.
Okay. Before we move into further, Commissioner Smith, would you push your hand indicator and let me see if it's working? Okay, it is, it is working. It is working. I see it now. Okay, you can take it down now. Okay. Ms. Wise, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is Commissioner Kemp's item regarding a presentation by T. Barta.
Commissioner Kemp, are you back?
Yes, I am.
You're recognized.
Thank you. Before we start the presentation, I believe T. Barta was part of what the legislators did is said that they needed to present to every community in the region and all the boards. T. Barta, so that you all, I know many people don't understand or know exactly what T. Barta is. It is confusing. We have all kinds of transit bureaucracies or transportation bureaucracies. It's a regional transit authority. It was created by state statute, including Hillsborough, Pinellas, Manatee, Pasco, and Hernando Counties. The 13-member T. Barta Board has one county commissioner from each of those five counties. Also has the mayors of St. Petersburg and Tampa and one representative each from Hart and P S T A. The governor can appoint four of the 13 members from the regional business community. At present, the only transportation service provided by T. Barta is a van pool program, which right now during coronavirus times is mostly shut down because we really wouldn't want multiple people riding in vans in such close contact. Because funding is allocated based on population, Hillsborough County currently supports 41% of all local funding for T. Barta. And what they're going to be presenting is Envision 2030. It's a vision for expanding the investment in T. Barta and its role in the region, up to and including $400 to $600 million in capital on a regional express bus plan with operating costs of $131 million over 10 years. This plan includes three 10-year scenarios. That's what they're going to do. The status quo scenario, which maintains the current level of investment from Hillsborough County and other local governments. The low-impact scenario, in which T. Barta assumes routes that Hart now operates by our local agency, but they ask us to fund them to do it, and they can either hire us or privatize. And the third scenario with significant increases, it requires significant, significant increases in investment of our local transit tax dollars, as well as dollars allocated by the federal and state government for transit. But I'll let them go through this and then I'll have some comments afterwards. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp, and good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I'm David Green, Executive Director of T. Barta, and want to thank you all for having us on your agenda today. I believe you're all familiar with the background of this, that the reshaping of T. Barta as a regional transit authority three years ago also gave us the responsibility to develop a regional transit development plan, which is Tampa-based for such plan. We worked on that over the past 18 months, and T. Barta's board just adopted it recently at our June board meeting. We subsequently submitted it to F. Dot and the legislature, and as Commissioner Kemp indicated, we're now scheduling presentations with each of the five boards of county commissioners in order to review the plan with all of our county elected officials. I would like to offer one point of clarification before we start. That this is not a presentation about the regional B R T project that you all may have heard about. This is a plan that includes many regional projects that do include regional rapid transit, but that project is just a piece of the much larger vision that we're providing an overview of today. If you all would like an update of that specific project, we're happy to come back and present at a future meeting, but it's not the focus of our presentation today. Bill Ball from Tin Dale Oliver was the lead consultant on this project, so at this point, I'll turn it over to him so he can go through the presentation with you.
Mr. Ball, you're recognized, sir. Mr. Ball, you have to mute yourself, I believe. We can't, we can't hear you, Mr. Ball. Mr. Ball, for some reason, we can't hear you. Is it just me?
I can't hear.
I don't hear anything there.
Mr. Ball? We're having a problem.
Mr. Ball did check in early and his audio was good earlier. Mr. Ball, if you can, go to the bottom of WebEx and go to more options, those three white horizontal dots. When you open that up, there's speaker, microphone, camera. Select that. Under the word microphone, there's a drop down and a level control there. Maybe you can adjust that to get your microphone activated. If not, you can always grab your cell phone and call into the session, sir.
Let's do this. If you don't mind, let's temporarily pass this item and move on to F. Two, and then see, we'll come back to see if Mr. Ball is able to rectify his technical problems. Is that, is there any objection to that?
No.
Okay. All right, Ms. Wise, let's take up F. Two.
F. Two. That's this Commissioner Smith's item relating to the Arts Council. And I believe there's members from the Arts Council also on the line to present Commissioner Smith.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. This item is to get board approval for the first step towards consideration of amending the Arts Council ordinance to restructure the Arts Council under Hillsborough County Government. As you know, I'm the board's representative on the Arts Council, and we have been exploring this path for some time. We voted unanimously at our June 23rd public meeting to ask the county commission to do this. As noted in the backup, the Arts Council has been operating as an independent special district. For some time now, we've been working to find ways to cut costs and improve effectiveness and improve the services we give the county. Toward that end, last year, we moved the offices of the Arts Council into County Center. You all might remember that. And that has been such a good thing, leading to some great synergies and partnerships that we've been looking into the benefits of more fully joining together and making the Arts Council a part of county government in the same way as is done in other counties such as Miami-Dade and Broward Counties. And in the same way we do with other things similar to the Cultural Arts Assets Commission, for example. The backup includes letters of support from Martine Collier, the Executive Director of the Arts Council, as well as Emery Alfred, the Arts Council Board Chair. And Martine's, Martine Collier's letter lays out the cost savings and other benefits in detail. And she's on the line today if you have questions for her. We have been working closely with staff of the Economic Development Department and the County Attorney's Office to make sure we're doing this in the best way. But the item before you today is just the preliminary step of asking for your approval to continue working with staff to draft an ordinance to bring back for board review. And then if we approve that draft, the third step would be to set a public hearing to consider finalizing the ordinance. So if you need more explanation, we're here for that, but we do have two more steps where we can, we can do more of that. I'll make the motion, but first I'll ask, Martine, did you have, Ms. Collier, did you have anything to add at this time?
I think I put it pretty much in the letter that I drafted. The, we had such a significant cost savings when we moved to the County Center last year. It was around $70,000. And by going under the county and getting rid of the duplications of audit and payroll and things that we're doing separately, it will save another close to $160,000 annually, just piggybacking on processes that the county already has in place. And I think the unanimous vote of the board is because during these COVID-19 times, with the struggles that our artists and arts organizations are having, taking that money that's being used for administrative overhead and directing it more into specific programs makes a tremendous amount of sense.
Thank you. So as I say, we're all here for questions, but there will be time to review the, this further in more detail when the, when we get a draft back, if you will. And so I'm hoping you'll approve this first step today. And the motion is to direct the County Attorney's Office to collaborate with the Economic Development Department and the Arts Council of Hillsborough County and other stakeholders to draft an ordinance amending Hillsborough County Ordinance Number 89-26, as amended, which, that's the Arts Council ordinance, to restructure the Arts Council under Hillsborough County Government. Thank you.
Second.
Second.
That was a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Merman, and Miss Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say, I think it's a great idea. I always wondered why, you know, we had not done this in the past. Certainly makes a lot of sense, and I commend Commissioner Smith for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Merman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this, Commissioner Smith, thank you for your leadership on this. This is something that needed to be done for a long time, like Commissioner Hagan said. But I've always felt that the Arts Council has so much opportunity for growth and expansion within our county to get more people involved with the arts. And I just think this will go a long way to take the first step to really, you know, get arts to be an important priority in our county. Thanks.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I just wanted to thank you, too. I think it's great that we're doing this, or hopefully, it looks like we will be, Commissioner Smith, for bringing this forward. I'm surprised it, you know, I was confused that it hadn't been operating in this way before, and it sounds like it's a win all around for making sense for the arts, for the county, and for the future of this strong synergy. So thanks for bringing this forward.
Okay. Seeing no other hands, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Merman and Kemp. Please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay. Ms. Wise, let's revert back to F. One and see if Mr. Ball has been able to rectify his technical problems. Mr. Ball, are you there?
This is Bill Ball. I'm on the phone now. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Shall I present on the phone then? Okay. Sorry about the difficulty. We tested earlier. I'm not sure what happened, but anyway. Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, I'm pleased to be here to represent T. Barta today and talk about the first-ever regional transit development plan for the Tampa Bay area. Next slide. So what is Envision 2030? The bottom line is, we put together a regional transit vision, and we're looking for consensus with our partners to put that vision and make it become a reality. And what we tried to do was start putting together that blueprint to make that happen. And it has important elements that help T. Barta as well in terms of the pursuit of funding and the promotion of the services that it provides today. Next slide. And these are the key partners, the five transit operators in the five counties, as well as the NPOs and the Florida DOT. And you can see the existing services that those partners provide throughout the five-county area today. Next slide. And these are the values and benefits that we're striving for T. Barta to help contribute to in terms of regional transit investment. I'm going to highlight a couple of these as being the most critical ones today, but we're certainly striving to pursue all of these in the future. Next slide. And the first one is regional job access. Some work done by the University of Minnesota shows that implementation of Envision 2030 would have a substantial impact on the number of jobs that would, the average resident would have access to throughout the Tampa Bay region. And that's particularly true for the low to moderate income areas in the five-county region. Next slide. The Tampa Bay Partnership puts together an annual assessment of how Tampa Bay ranks with other regions around the country. Unfortunately, Tampa Bay ranks fairly low in a number of categories that are critical related to transit and related to housing and transportation affordability. And we do believe that a regional transit investment more robust would contribute to making the region more competitive. Next slide. There's been substantial public engagement over the past year and a half. We've reached well more than 10,000 people during that process, and you can see the various techniques that were used on this particular slide. Next slide. Now, there are two top priorities, and this is important for the local partners to understand. The number one priority that T. Barta has to increase the total transit funding that comes to the Tampa Bay region, whether it be local services, whether it be regional services, regardless of who's the operator, that's the bottom line priority for T. Barta. And the second priority- And the second priority is building consensus regionwide on how T-BARDA can best support progress towards the regional transit vision. Next slide. We did learn from other regions around the country. And we wanted to look at their best practices to see what made the most sense to consider here in the Tampa Bay area. And they've generally been more successful in securing federal transit funding. So we wanted to learn from their experiences. So there's a lot of detail in our work about what they've done to promote regional services and to coordinate with local services in their respective regions. Next slide. So we didn't reinvent the wheel. There's a lot of work that has been done previously by the local transit operators, by the MPOs, by T-BARDA, and the public outreach that we received throughout this process, as well as technical analysis that we conducted along the way, to come up with the regional transit vision that we have to present with you today. Next slide. And this is that regional transit vision. So what you see is a variety of services and connectivity amongst the five counties throughout the region, ranging from express bus services to passenger ferry services, other technologies, as well as regional rapid transit, as David mentioned earlier before. I do want to mention one thing. There's been some discussion about regional rapid transit and its relationship to parking. And I wanted to clarify that T-BARDA and its project team, they're looking at 13 potential stations along that I-275 corridor. And each station has a distinct purpose that we're working with neighborhoods on to define what that purpose is. So a station like in the Heights area would likely require very minimal parking, whereas a station in Wesley Chapel would definitely require more significant parking to provide that park and ride access to downtown Tampa, west shore, and across the bridge. Next slide. So we have that regional transit vision map that we just showed. We wanted to step back and look at the next 10 years and look at three investment scenarios. Of course, the first one is funded, the second and third one are not. And I want to describe what those are, and it really was developed to facilitate the discussion with the board. Number one, the status quo, where they continue with commute Tampa Bay. And as Commissioner Kemp said, that includes van pool services, but it also includes other commuter assistance services to employers throughout the region as well, and the regional transit planning focus that T-BARDA has served in recent years. Scenario two is more of a low-impact scenario. And, and, and what this does is it does, T-BARDA would pursue additional funding for transit, but it would in fact allow T-BARDA to then in fact give that funding to local providers to expand existing regional express bus services that are provided today. And then finally, scenario three is where we have a much more robust regional transit investment. It does include the first phase of regional rapid transit, which would be that exclusive lane kind of project on the I-275 corridor. But it also includes four new regional express bus routes that provides connectivity to the other counties in the region. Next slide. And this is what scenario three looks like if you see it on the map. It's essentially a subset of that vision map that I showed earlier. Again, I'll emphasize it's unfunded, but, but this is what it would look like if we were able to fund the high-impact scenario. Next slide. So let's talk about costs and revenue. And the next 10 years, these are numbers over a 10-year period. And it first shows the existing revenue sources that are available accumulate to about $42 million over that 10-year period. So you see that in all of scenarios, which means that on the operating side, the status quo scenario is balanced, it's funded. And then we have a deficit for the other two scenarios, as you see on this slide. And of course, it goes up with each scenario. Next slide. And this is the capital side of that same kind of relationship between the scenarios. The first two scenarios have a small capital investment, so we're either balanced or, or a slight deficit. The big investment comes in the high-impact scenario where we would have that exclusive bus service on the I-275 corridor, plus the investments in capital for the new regional express bus route. Next slide. And this describes the existing funding that T-BARDA has today over the 10-year period. And what this shows, there's about $42 million in operating funds, about $10 million in capital funds. The bulk of the, of those funding sources come from state and federal sources. The gold area shows the local contribution that are provided by the five counties today. And that accumulates to about 5.6 million over that 10-year period. Next slide. This shows that those county contributions on an annual level of what they are today, it is about 550,000 a year. And this shows the allocation to the five counties based on population and what's currently happening in, in terms of local contributions to T-BARDA. Next slide. So the big challenge for T-BARDA is clearly funding in the future. And the board has directed staff to work with them in developing options for pursuing dedicated funding from the state for two categories, the operations of the agency itself, as well as regional transit projects as they pursue, are pursued in the future. So the board is now, and will be meeting later this month, to talk further about how they proceed to collaborate with local partners on what types of funding to pursue at the state level. Most of the options that we've identified would require some type of legislative change. So that's what the board will be discussing in the coming weeks and months. Next slide. We did put together a series of calls to action and recommendations to support that discussion. They're categorized in three areas, policy, funding, and commitment and collaboration. So I'll talk briefly about each one of these. Next slide. From a policy perspective, the T-BARDA board did adopt the plan back in June. And so the, the charge now is to get out and present the information about these policies to boards like yourselves, and to get more education about the plan, and, and, and over time, develop more consensus on where we're going with this plan. Next slide. Again, of course, funding is the key issue that will be the challenge for T-BARDA, and they'll be pursuing a, a work program as to what the next step should be. But again, the bottom line is securing dedicated and sustainable funding and looking for opportunities to leverage new state and federal transit funding to the Tampa Bay region. And so we'll be, again, working with the board to help them identify what those next steps would be and which types of legislative change may be necessary to pursue the funding opportunities that, that they have indicated. Next slide. Finally, commitment and collaboration. We are looking for support beyond T-BARDA board, cultivating champions so that we can pursue funding together as a region. The bottom line is getting a region that, that speaks as a unified voice, that, that again, looks for opportunities to increase the total amount of transit funding that becomes for the region, whether it be support for a local project or a regional project. And the board will, the T-BARDA board will be looking at the best way to collaborate with our local partners in deciding those next steps. Next slide. This just reiterates the values and benefits that I started the presentation with. Again, the bottom line is that regional job access, the making the region more competitive compared to other regions around the country, and, and really just generating regional connectivity for all the residents and visitors to the, to the entire Tampa Bay region. Next slide. This was the action that the T-BARDA board took back on June 22. They did, number one, adopt the Regional Transit Vision Network, even though it's unfunded at this point, they did adopt the vision. Number two, they adopted the status quo scenario, as that's the only scenario that's funded with existing revenue sources. And then number three, they supported the continued discussion and evaluation of the calls to actions and recommendations so that in collaboration with local partners, we can pursue opportunities to potentially fund the other higher-impact scenarios that we talked about earlier. Next slide. Next steps, we're doing the presentations like today to the other forums throughout the five county region. And we've already presented to Hernando and Pasco Commissions, and we'll be presenting to Manatee next week, MPO boards as well, the CCC we presented to as well. So we're really just looking to get the word out about, about Envision 2030. We're not looking for any action at this point. We're just looking for education and to respond to any questions and comments that you may have. Next slide. So if you have, would like to see more information, please refer to the T-BARDA website. Envision 2030 is the, including an executive summary, that's a real simplified way of looking at what the elements of the plan are all about. But with that, David and I are here to answer any questions and take any comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We, we have some questions. Commissioner Kemp, you want to speak now or want to add close? Which one are you going to do now?
I'll, I'll, I'll speak now. I just want to add some information that I think people aren't quite aware of. And so I think that should be part of any discussion or questions people have. I'd like to emphasize that 92% of the time, this is before coronavirus times, anyone turns a key to drive to work in Hillsborough County, they end up in Hillsborough County. Our needs are very much internally within the county. You should know that ridership on Hart buses didn't decrease as much overall as it did in transit agencies across the country because of the pandemic. The reason is likely because we have a higher percentage of riders who depend desperately on our public transit. They have no alternative. They cannot drive. And our public transit is the most underfunded transit in the nation, not by just a little bit, but by a huge amount for an urban area of this size. So what do we see with our major transportation investments? We have a $400 people mover at the airport, carries visitors from planes to rental cars. It's a mile long. Currently, the T-BARDA proposal, that is their main proposal that they're putting forward, is what I've called the Regional Parking Garage Plan. I think that's a fair statement. It's a $450 to $600 million plan, mainly to build parking garages that they call intermodal centers, but are parking garages, and to add lanes to the interstate with transit dollars. They want to spend local, state, and federal transit dollars on it. And it's truly an investment in parking garages and additional interstate lanes. I think we also need to look at funding sources. There's a profound inequity as we are desperate for local transit investment to use our, our local transit dollars. And they're asking for our money to give to them to either hire our own agency out for some of these routes or to privatize our transit system. And, and as I said, pay for parking garages and interstate land, lane expansion. I want to be clear that T-BARDA has long promoted itself as an agency that would bring in funds and federal funds. That's not what's happening. A lot of questions have been raised both here at Hart and in Pinellas and Manatee County about this plan, specifically that T-BARDA takes funding from local agencies, also that T-BARDA seeks to take away control from local government and agencies. Right now, Hillsborough pays the highest amount of any local government, as you saw on that chart, in the region because our population's the greatest. However, our representation in the board does not reflect that level of investment. Hillsborough County's current investment is limited. We received an invoice for status quo funding in the amount of $212,000, as mentioned in the presentation. But I have concern even about that funding, and I want to lay that out, including specifically that that funding is used to pay lobbyists. T-BARDA has local government, county governments pay, and they use that, those dollars because their restricted federal and state dollars can't be used for this. So they use our county government's dollars to pay to lobby Tallahassee. What's happened for two years, not this year, but in the prior two years, is each time they've taken away funds, including a million dollars twice from Hart for our operation center to go to T-BARDA, and $2 million, $1 million each year from PSTA, which PSTA has objected to strongly as well. The state transportation budgets entitled, intended to proceed according to priorities identified and approved at the local level, which is what we've done. And then for the last two years before this year, T-BARDA successfully lobbied the legislature seeking earmarks that took away our local dollars for desperately needed operation center at Hart. So what I basically like to do is, they have, in their budget stated that their, the money that the counties provide would go to partially fund their lobbyists. I'd like to make a motion that any local contribution from Hillsborough County to T-BARDA not be used for lobbying.
Second.
The motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Overman, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair, and I appreciate it. And I, I just have a couple of questions for the, from the T-BARDA representatives and as well as from our staff. So it's, it was presented that Hillsborough County contributes $222,000. And that's in our current budget, and I assume it will be in our budget for 2021. Is, is that what we have allocated in our proposed budget that is due to be approved? Can maybe Mr. Bricky or someone else answer that question, and then I have a follow-up?
I can answer that for you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we currently have $235,000 in our budget for fiscal year '21.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And so recently, I asked for $50,000 for Hart. We had zero in the budget for Hart. And yes, Hart has its own mileage rate and has its own income stream. But as we've heard, and maybe not this whole board has heard, Hart is running a deficit budget and utilizing their reserves at a rapid rate that is going to cause some serious problems. This program also assumes contributions by Hart to assist in operations. And I have, I have a bit of a problem with that. We, as, as Commissioner Kemp referenced, you know, our local Hillsborough citizens need to hear transit. And Hart has historically had to cut back on, you know, local routes in order to meet their budgetary constraints. And if in our budget this year, all we're contributing to our local transit agency is $50,000, I'm finding great angst in committing $222,000. But if, if the motion restricts it to operations of the express lanes and the van pools that are in place that are operating, I'd be willing to support the motion. But I do find it challenging that we have our local agencies not receiving the funding, and then we'll be asked by T-BARDA to contribute in the operations of a regional plan at the rate of 40%. That's frustrating. And I'll stop there.
Commissioner Smith, you recognize?
Thank you. I think it makes all the sense in the world when you look at, in the context of what Commissioner Overman just pointed out. We're, we're giving $50,000 to Hart and $220-some-thousand to T-BARDA. It, you know, I do have heartburn over that imbalance to start with, okay, in our budget. And maybe we can even look at that. But certainly, the first thing we should do is to make sure that those dollars are not being used to lobby in Tallahassee against our interests. We can lobby effectively for ourselves in, in both the county and the Hart level rather than paying this other multi-county agency to lobby with our dollars in ways that, that is not necessarily directly represented to the citizens. When, and I'll, I'll highlight this factor of this. When I first saw this Envision 2030 plan at the MPO Policy Committee, some major concerns were raised about the future plans here that we're funding, raised by myself and others. Meanwhile, Pinellas Transit Agency, PSTA, has written a letter expressing similar concerns. And one concern, which I share, is that even the, which Commissioner Kemp also was pointing out, even the low-impact scenario involves T-BARDA taking some funding from the local transit agencies, including Hart, PSTA. And then you'd have T-BARDA assume the responsibility of some of our routes. But actually, all they'd be doing would be subcontracting those routes out to private entity or possibly subcontract them back to Hart while keeping the funding for T-BARDA to be a middleman, pass-through layer of administration. So I would think that, that a lot of commissioners here today could agree that that is multiplying layers layers of government, wasting taxpayer dollars, and moving away from economic efficiency in a time when we are all strapped for funds. So I will certainly support the motion, but also would would want to look at the issues that both Commissioner Kemp and Commissioner Overman raised as well. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Smith. Anyone need the motion repeated? Okay, seeing none, please call the roll on the motion by Commissioner Kemp.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This is David Green. I was wondering if it'd be possible to respond to some of the comments before the roll was called?
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I do have to admit, you know, we're not like or unlike many transit agencies, funding easily is our number one greatest challenge. There was no funding mechanism put in place when T-Barda was created or when it became a regional transit authority. Local contributions started several years ago, which helped tremendously, but they're only part of the solution. So T-Barda hired a state lobbyist about a year and a half ago to try and secure recurring funds from the state general operating budget, among some other things that we needed help with. But we did end up receiving a few earmarks instead. We are tremendously grateful for every penny of local, state, and federal funding we receive, but we do not request earmarks. And our lobbying activities actually extend beyond T-Barda. We're asked quite a bit about local projects, so we also advocate on behalf of local transit agencies in order to act as the regional voice that that T-Barda was intended to be. We do not take funding from local transit agencies. There was a comment about a letter that was submitted to T-Barda outlining some concerns, but I want to stress that that was after the preliminary report was presented to T-Barda's board in April, and those concerns were in fact addressed before the final report was presented and adopted in June. So what we're presenting to you all today takes all of those things into considerations, and all of those concerns were actually resolved and addressed with the local agencies. The comment about subcontracting or privatizing is not entirely true. The regional routes that are operated by the local agencies today would in fact remain with those local agencies. The regional routes that are identified in envision 2030 would be new regional routes, which would fall under T-Barda's purview. There is potential, we would want service, regional service to be operated by local transit agencies, but it would really depend on the mode of operation. There could be modes like ferry service as an example, or rail service that local transit operators may not be capable of operating or in fact may not want to operate. So that would in turn need to leave a door open to hire private contractors to operate those services. There is no contract in place or mechanism between local agencies and T-Barda today for local agencies to operate regional service. So there would need to be discussions with attorneys and local agencies themselves in order to put things of that nature in place. So again, you know, that would be a reason to leave a door open to hire a private operator for services like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by, but we don't, no, 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 we're not, we're not going to get a tit-for-tat, Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smith, no, ma'am. We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Smith. Please call the roll. Yes.
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Now we need a motion to receive the presentation.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Merman, second by Commissioner White to receive the presentation. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Yes, Chairman Miller, the next item is item B eight. This is related, as we mentioned before, relating to our ERP system. And this is something that has been working, we have all as staff been working on for quite some time. There are a lot of people that I'd like to recognize, I'm sure we're going to forget somebody, but this has been an effort of Ramin and his staff, Tom Fessler and his staff, as well as the city of Tampa and the clerk's office, and Peggy Kaski had a role as well. So this has been, this gives us the ability to modernize our enterprise resource planning center, our computer system. It's going to provide additional security, especially in this pandemic world where we have a lot of people working remotely. So I want to thank everybody for working together to help bring these items together. It's been a long time in the coming. So with that, Scott Strohmer will present this item.
Good morning, Scott Strohmer, Procurement Services. PA is asking the board to approve an executed five-year non-competitive subscription services agreement directly with Oracle America Incorporated for modernization and purchase of Oracle Fusion Applications and EPM Cloud Software as a Service for the Enterprise Solutions and Quality Assurance Department at a total cost of $18,347,556.89. Resulting agreement will modernize existing business and budgeting applications to Oracle's most updated and secure application and architecture. In this case, there are no subcontracting opportunities for disadvantaged business enterprise firms, as the proprietary software and services will be provided directly exclusively by Oracle. Procurement Services does recommend approval. Representatives from the Enterprise Solutions and Quality Assurance Department and Information Technology Department are in attendance and available for questions.
Thank you. Commissioner White, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to let you know that I'd like to be recognized after B eight and B nine to make a motion that's related to both of those.
So you want to make a, you want to come back after we approve or whatever, what do we do, whatever, just make them be eight? Okay.
After we vote on both B eight and B nine.
Okay, all right. All right, what's your pleasure on B eight?
Move approval, Commissioner Merman.
Motion by Commissioner Merman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kemp. Seeing no discussion, please call the roll on B eight.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Commissioner White, you recognize.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I'd like to make the motion after B nine is disposed of.
I thought you would do B eight also. Okay.
The motion I'll make is related to both B eight and B nine.
Okay, all right. Ms. Wise.
Yes, Chairman, B seven is the next item, and is also related to this item. It is the interlocal agreement with the clerk's office regarding to how we will operate together and work together on this project.
Okay.
Again, Scott Strohmer with Procurement Services. Item B seven is asking the board to approve an interlocal agreement with the clerk of the circuit court. It substantially deforms presented for the implementation, administration, and operational support of a modernized and upgraded enterprise resource planning system. Agreement is intended to create a joint partnership between the clerk and the county, including the roles and responsibilities of the parties, in order for the clerk and the county to join together to implement, administer, operate, and maintain and upgrade it in more modern ERP system, which benefits both parties, as well as other agencies for which the clerk provides accounting and financial reporting services. Staff does recommend approval. Representatives from management, budget, and IIO are in attendance and available for questions.
Who was that?
Commissioner Overman.
Motion by Commissioner Merman. Seeing no discussion on B seven, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Ms. Wise.
The final item relating to this matter is item B nine relating to a sole source procurement for Protiviti to assist the internal auditor in identifying risks associated with this ERP system.
Again, Scott Strohmer with Procurement Services. Item B nine is in two parts, the first of which is asking the board to award a sole source contractor to Protiviti Incorporated for professional services to assist the county internal auditor with identifying and evaluating risk associated with the modernization and implementation of Oracle applications at a not-to-exceed cost of $685,900. Second part of that is to approve a fiscal twenty fiscal year twenty budget amendment resolution to transfer $381,000 from the internal auditor non-departmental allotments budget to the ERP systems enhancement project. In this case, there are no case, there are no subcontracting opportunities for disadvantaged business enterprise firms, as the specialized services will continue to be provided by the incumbent vendor. Procurement Services does recommend approval. The county internal auditor and the contractor, Protiviti, are in attendance and available for questions.
What's your pleasure?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Merman, second by Commissioner Overman. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Commissioner White, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we all know, B eight is a big-ticket item. B nine obviously is a sole source item. You know, I voted in favor of both of these. I think it's a good step forward, but with that being said, because of the dollars in play and because of the sole sourcing, I think for both of these contracts that it's incredibly important that the board take a vote on any proposed cost overruns, and also that the board receive a quarterly report on each of these. So I move that for the contracts referenced in both B eight and B nine, that the board receive a quarterly report on each of these, and that any proposed cost overruns come to the board for a vote.
Second.
As a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Merman, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want, I wanted to ask Scott Strohmer, what is in the contracts as it relates to overruns? Like, what's the policy?
Commissioner Merman, I'm just going to take a look at the agenda item real quick. I don't believe anytime, we're pretty much just asking for that dollar amount. The first one with Protiviti is a not-to-exceed, so we would have to come back to the board for anything on that one. And even on the Oracle, I think the play will be certainly to bring back anything that's in excess of that original amount that's been disclosed to the board. The board's made that very clear in the past that they want to, you know, they're very careful about those delegations, and so we're very respectful of that, and we bring those items back to the board.
Okay, so what in effect, the motion, what does it, it's really, I mean, what does it do to this? This contract, does it change it?
No, it doesn't.
Or?
Yeah, no, it doesn't. We would still, this doesn't, it's, that'd be good practice. No, it shouldn't affect anything.
Okay, okay, very good. Okay, so the fact that it's not to exceed already, I will support the motion. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't putting any undue burden on anybody, but I think it's a good motion. Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Overman, you recognize.
Thank you, and I do agree, it doesn't change the financial terms, but it does change our staff's responsibility to come back to us every three months to inform us on their progress. And our staff right now, especially in the area of IT, are, as well as all the other things they've got to go on and deal with, are pretty busy people right now. So I'd like to ask if maybe Commissioner White might consider either amending it, or I could offer an amendment to do every six months, maybe, rather than every three months, given how some of these projects take quite a bit to roll out, as it's taken us five months to get to a place where we've got, you know, benefits that we have resources for going out to our citizens. It takes a bit of time to get these projects when it comes to technology going. So would you be willing to consider that?
Commissioner Overman, you know, I came prepared to ask for quarterly reports, but parliamentary procedure would allow you to make that motion to amend, to change it to every six months.
Then I'd like to offer an amendment to change it to every six months.
I'll second.
As the motion, a motion to amend the motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Merman. We're now on the amended, on the amendment, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion on the amendment by Commissioner Overman that was seconded by Commissioner Merman? Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, please call the roll on the amendment. Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Now we're on the amended motion. Is there a discussion on the amended motion? Any discussion on amended motion? Seeing none, please call the roll on amended motion.
Miller?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Merman?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, Ms. Wise.
Mr. Chairman, it looks like all we have left are future discussion items.
Are there any future discussion items? Are there any future discussion items? Seeing none. Ladies and gentlemen, it's 11:27. You can all have a good lunch now as we've finished our agenda, and be careful, stay safe, and see you tomorrow. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone. Stay safe. Bye-bye.